We are recording now, so I will call to order a regular meeting of the Wellington Board of Selectmen. Today is Monday, May 3rd, 2021 at 6:30 PM. And the first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'll all join me. Stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, we'll move on. You'll see I'm in a new spot. This banner was made for us through the generosity of CCM, so the Connecticut Council of Municipalities. For the last year, they made printing services available to all member towns. We had all of the signage you see in and around our building, the signage you see at River Road Park, the signs that you see at the transfer station. They were kind enough to offer those services at no cost to member towns. So I want to thank them for that. So the common room is being used, so we thought we'd set up a new area here. So, thank you for that. The next item on our agenda is approval of minutes. You will see in your packet, minutes from our May, I'm sorry, April 19th meeting. We will entertain a motion.
I would make a motion that we approve the minutes of April 19th with the following correction. On page eight, the sentence talking about the treasurer's position, the sentence, "The person that we hired," if I'm mistaken, "is the highest paid employee in the town of Wellington." I said, "The person that we hired," if I'm not mistaken. That changes the meaning, so.
Any other corrections? I will second that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will mute myself and call for a vote.
Blessington?
Aye.
Boritz?
Aye.
Wyszynski?
Aye. You'll hear a little bit of feedback. Heather and I are awful close to each other with this large monitor right outside our office, so just stay muted as much as possible, or come in here if it becomes a problem. All right, present to speak. If you have joined us and you would like to speak, I ask you to unmute yourself. Identify yourself for the record and keep your comments to two minutes. Is there anyone present to speak? All right, there will be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Correspondents, there were no correspondents to report prior to tonight's meeting. Our selectman's report, I will update you, the Steve Grant, we're still in the same place we were two weeks ago, waiting on the contract from deep. I said, "That's a secret for the Old Town Hall Septic System." As far as the school building committee goes, we have not met since we last met. And the next meeting will be on May 19th at 6:30. Between now and then, the Deputy Secretary of DAS will be touring our school facilities, and so there will be an update at that next school building committee meeting. Lots of projects, we're still moving in a forward direction, waiting for final approval from, between the state. And they were looking at some proposed adjustments. Some things had to be taken out that were part of the project that DOT had in that area, in the area of the church, in the area of the school, and so making adjustments from that, and then after that, we will go out to bid for design. You'll see we had a new staff member still to fill at the Public Works Department. We've put that out for one more week to see if we can't find a candidate that encompasses all of the qualifications within that job description, so we'll keep you up to date. That will close this week on May 6th. The camera project here at the Town Office Building, we had new security cameras installed, and they were, that project was finalized on Thursday of this week, so there are new cameras outside. Also, there are two new cameras on the interior of this building as well. So not to monitor staff, but specifically for security purposes. So those are up and running now. The lights at River Road, you'll, if you recall, the project Parks and Rec had through CIP, was to put lights around the basketball court, the volleyball court, and the playscape. All of the lights are up. Currently, the lights on the basketball court are functioning. And as of now, the park is still open from dusk until, excuse me, from dusk to, I'm sorry, from dawn to dusk. And the lights may be on a little bit longer than that, but the park is still only open from dawn to dusk until the Parks and Rec Commission updates their policies and changes the hours to go along with the light. So as soon as they, they are moving in that direction, so as soon as they do that, we'll share the information. So a big thank you to Maureen Parcell, our former rec director, who made this long-awaited project happen, and our current director Bethany Colonia for seeing it to completion. In, the Conservation Commission has a request in CIP this year. You both might recall, for purchase of property on the Talmage, Daniel Talmage Estate on Mason Road. In order to move forward with the grant application, they're going to need approval from PCC under Connecticut General Statute 824, and that, so my office would ask PCC to grant that approval, and this is something they would need for the grant application for, towards the purchase of that property. And I know this board approved the CIP plan that is part of the budget moving forward. So if this board is in agreement that we still support that, I would proceed with sending a communication to the Planning and Zoning Commission to move forward and that approval. So CGS 824 requires that approval is received in this manner in order to purchase property from the town. And it would be required, an as-required item in the grant that the Conservation Commission is applying for. So I'm just looking to see that you two both still support that, probably still support that, that purchase of that land.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll send that memo forward. All right, Public Works update, Troy is with us.
All right, can you hear me okay?
We can.
All right. Sweeping's still going on around town. We have about a few more weeks of that, then it'll be complete. We cleaned out a swell behind Schofield Road. Roadside mowing is still continuing, grading dirt roads. We only have Mason Road left. Everything else has been graded. We helped with installing a tent at Hull School, just like the one we installed at Center School. We installed some new ceiling tiles at the Town Office Building in the kitchen area. We've installed, replaced some new road signs, some speed limit signs around town. We finished looming up down at the park where the new lights were installed, picked up the trash at the park, and we cleaned up some trees from Friday's little windstorm there. We had two big trees come down on Polster and one on Penny Hill, so we cleaned up those today. That's about it.
Any questions, comments regarding Public Works? Troy, can I ask how things have been at the transfer station since the swap shed opened?
Most people are being, most people are being respectful. I do ask that, you know, at, people that come up at 3:30 right at the time there, that they give the guys the, you know, we close at 3:45, so I mean, get in and get out. We've had a few stragglers there that are hanging around there, and the guys have actually had to ask them to leave. So if we could just kind of be respectful of that, you know, the guys do have their maintenance stuff they clean up after and their paperwork to do, so.
At 3:45, they would need to leave.
Yes, yep. So other than that, everything seems to be okay.
Right, so we'll just remind people, you know, wearing masks, you know, if you can't remain socially distant, and so in that area, it's impossible to be socially distant from, from others outside your household. All right, that's good to hear. I know people were looking forward to that opening. It is a hot item, a hot place to be. All right, seeing nothing further, I will move on to Town Clerk Week. Today begins Town Clerk's Week. Oh, come on in. I'm gonna put my mask on because I'm gonna be joined by Robin Campbell, our Town Clerk, and Rachel Pierce, our Assistant Town Clerk.
Come on in, ladies.
So I'm going to read a proclamation. Proclamation, Town Clerk's Week, May 2nd through May 8th, 2021. Whereas the office of the Town Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the Town Clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the Town Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of a government at other levels, and whereas Town Clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas the Town Clerk serves as the Information Center on Functions of Local Government and Community, whereas Town Clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the official of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, country, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the Town Clerk. Now therefore, I, for Selectwoman Erica G. Wyszynski, Town of Wellington, do recognize the week of May 2nd through May 8th, 2021, as Town Clerk's Week, and further extend appreciation to our Town Clerk, Robin Campbell, and to all Town Clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent, dated this third day of May, 2021. Is there a second?
I'll second that one.
Right, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, we're gonna skip the roll call vote with this one, Heather. So Robin and Rachel, thank you. I'll give you a COVID appropriate elbow bump. Both Robin and Rachel joined the Town Clerk's Office in the middle of a pandemic, in the middle of what we now know is, was a historic election. There are lots of things ever-changing in their office, and they have stepped up to the plate and really worked hard and done their town proud. So if you ever need anything in the Town Clerk's Office, feel safe that you're going to get the service that you deserve and gonna get the answer that you need. And if they're not sure, they're gonna find out the answer, and they're gonna make sure everything is done right. So I thank you both very much. I won't make you speak, but if you would like.
Actually, I just wanted to thank everybody, everybody. I am so humbled by the outpouring of support by everybody that I talked to since I took that role. Um, I almost wanna cry. That's how, I just am so humbled that everybody has entrusted the Town of Wellington under my care in that office. And Rachel and I are a great team, and Rachel's awesome. She, she works, she's small, but she's mighty. She, she comes, she hits the ground running daily. So I'm very, very blessed to work in such a great place and be with amongst all you great people. So thank you so much.
Thank you. You know, it was tough for us to let Robin go from the Selectman's Office, for sure. But having her moved down the hall, she's still been here to help in any capacity that she can, and is really making that, cleaning up that department and really making it her own. And thanks to Rachel's super organization skills, you'll really see a difference as soon as we open the doors, you can come into this building. So thank you both very much, and enjoy a week dedicated to you.
Well, thank you. I'll have to come up with something.
There you go.
Tomorrow will be busy, well, I don't know, the referendums tomorrow.
Yep, so they'll have plenty of work tomorrow. So thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to know what they win.
They win, they win this very night. It's gold sealed proclamation.
Not even in a frame?
And the right to be, the right to be really busy tomorrow on a referendum, so.
I don't.
Give them a call and shout out. So thank you, thank you all.
All right.
All right. Thank you, thank you. All right, we have one tax refund this evening. So I will make a motion to refund Wheels LT $130.50 on a certificate of correction. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by John. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote.
Blessington?
Aye.
Boritz?
Aye.
Wyszynski?
Aye. She's a little Wizard of Oz, doesn't she? What makes that even funnier is that she's behind this giant screen. All right, we'll move on to my bi-weekly COVID-19 update. I am happy to say that in Wellington, and overall, we're really seeing a decline in positive cases. A lot of that has to do with our community not only becoming vaccinated, but really, like we had hoped, thinking beyond themselves, thinking about others, and that we are safer and stronger together. So since our last meeting on the 19th, we have seen an increase of just seven COVID-positive cases. And we had 20, so for a total cumulative of 249 COVID positives, 21 probable cases, and I'm happy to report, we have not seen the loss of life due to COVID in quite some time here in Wellington. As of Thursday, we're still on that downgraded yellow alert with a slight decrease of 7.3 cases per 100,000. So again, that really speaks to our residents stepping up and doing their part. I think it helps that we can all be outside a little bit more as well, if it would stop raining and warm up just a little bit. As you all know, we still, as of March, I'm sorry, April 1st, every resident in Connecticut 16 years of older is now eligible to receive a COVID-19 vaccine. The data as of April 28th shows that 45% of Wellington residents have received their first doses, and 1,888 individuals in Wellington are fully vaccinated. So once again, I will encourage anyone 16 or over to consider becoming vaccinated. Connecticut, as reported this afternoon by our governor, is the first state to reach 50% of adults 18 and over, fully vaccinated, and 69% of our residents 18 and over have received their first dose. So for those that receive their first dose, I encourage you to continue and receive a second dose, and those that are hesitant to consider being vaccinated. It is still not required, and it's certainly your decision, but we encourage you to do so. The Governor's Sector Rules for Businesses as of May 1st. This weekend, you saw change curfews for restaurants and entertainment recreation venues. Theaters were moved back one hour to midnight. So that's new. Bars that don't serve food can now open. They have been closed the entire time. So those are bars that don't serve food. They can serve outside only as of right now. And on May 19th, they can begin serving inside. So that's big news for some of those bars in and around our community who've had to be closed throughout the entire pandemic. Effective Wednesday, May 19th, all remaining business restrictions will end, but indoor masks will continue. So they'll be back at full capacity. They'll be able to serve indoors. And there were some exceptions so that venues could still have outdoor dining, even if they didn't prior to the pandemic. So we encourage you to safely visit some of our local restaurants and, and bars, and remain safe, but again, masks will still be required inside. So and then again, on May 9th, effective May 19th, we're ready for TPH. We'll issue recommendations for indoor and large outdoor venues, you know, example concerts, fairs, et cetera. So we look for those recommendations coming. The current emergency declaration by the governor was extended to May 20th, and that's when it's expected to end. In light of the decreasing positivity rate and the increasing vaccination rate, I'm looking at opening the Town Office Building and the remainder of our buildings, including the Old Town Hall, at the beginning of June. So we're waiting to see how the legislature is going to handle extending or any further action on the Governor's executive orders once they end specifically for public meetings. There's a lot of discussion about allowing a hybrid version. So for meetings such as the Board of Education, the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, it was always possible for a member to call in. You didn't have to be present in the room, but there was no ability for anyone else, or requirement for others to be able to attend in that, in that capacity. So that's one executive order, I think, may have some legs at the legislature to allow to continue, which would mean we would be able, you know, our boards to meet in person to some extent, and still that hybrid version for those who didn't want to be in person, as well as our residents not in person. So I think it's important that we be able to, to bring public meetings to as many people as possible. So I, by our next meeting, expect to have very specific details and dates on the opening of this building. We still have a few more things to put in place to make that happen and safe. And I think by then, all of our staff will, who chose, would be fully vaccinated, as well as the majority of the population in Wellington. I did hear today that we hope to see details on how the ARC funding can be spent. As you know, I've mentioned several times, the funding for Wellington is set to be turned over to the state by May 11th, and then to the town within 30 days, so June 11th. So Treasury has until May 11th to get those expanded guidelines out to us. But there is some movement and discussion that we think they may come to us this week, at which point they will be shared, and you'll start to hear about specifics on how we can use that money going forward. It's a lot of money, and we need to take a lot of time to think about how we spend it and spend it wisely in the ways that this meant to be used. So it's not as though we need to get it, we need to hurry up and purchase things. It's, there's gonna be some long-term spending, and how we can help individuals, businesses, economic development in our community, some food insecurities, et cetera. All right, any questions surrounding COVID? Comments? All right. So I will move on to the next item on our agenda is the Kettle Rock Property. At our last meeting, we met and voted to move forward to allow the tax sale that had been adjourned to continue. I can tell you that regarding that property this morning, the attorney acting for the Ashford and Wellington Tax Collectors resumed the 2012 adjourned tax sale on the 12 Kettle Properties. That was at nine o'clock this morning. There were no bidders. So the towns of Ashford and Wellington will move forward and take possession of their respective lots on, that was, to their 10 lots in Ashford and two lots in Wellington on November 3rd, 2021. So we have to wait six months, at which point the property owner could come forward at that point. The cost of the tax sale to Wellington was not budgeted. This wasn't something we knew would happen in this manner. We did vote to do this, but it would be the cost to the town of Wellington would be $2,000. Again, these were unbudgeted dollars, so I'm, I'm going to make a motion, and then we can discuss. So I moved to pay Pullman and Comley in the amount of $2,000 for services and expenses related to the town's purchase of the Kettle Rock Property at tax sale held May 3rd, 2021. Is there a second?
Second?
Okay, so you recall, in our discussions, it was if the, if there were no bidders, and then we would move forward, and the towns would take possession of the properties and can look for, hopefully, a buyer, a suitable buyer for the properties. And that way, these properties will go back on the tax rolls, some economic development in that area. And, you know, we would all be better, and then the, the final remediation would be able to be done in that manner. Janice is on the line with us. I don't know if she want, our revenue collector, Janice, you want to add anything to the discussion?
No, I think we about covered it. Just that, you know, everything is set now. We have to wait until the 3rd of November. At that point, we can go ahead and file the deed, and then figure out how we want to, you know, go forward from there.
Then we'll work with economic development in both towns to see what might be best suitable for use of that property, of that property as a whole. John?
Where's the, which line is the $2,000 coming out of?
So that's going to have to be, it would come out of the tax line item.
Okay.
Out of the tax department, so it's not budgeted. So we're just saying we agreed to pay. I think we'll be able to come up with funds from this budget. I feel confident we have the $2,000, so what I'll do after our motion is move forward to the Board of Finance, or to Donna, and then as that department show short in our final transfer, she'll look to transfer dollars from a department that was over. Typically, we end up finding those dollars in health insurance, it's because of status change, census change here. And so I feel confident that we will have funds to cover that amount.
Okay.
Okay. Liza? All right, so thank you for your work on this. This has been a long time coming. There's been a lot of cleanup, a lot, if you recall, there's a lot of cleanup done by EPA and deep on that property. And it will be nice to see it, this brown field land be completely remediated and be back on the books, and hopefully provide some new economic development in the town of Wellington and Ashford. All right, seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote.
Blessington?
Aye.
Boritz?
Aye.
Wyszynski?
Aye. Okay. Moving forward, last couple meetings, we had discussions about the treasurer position. And so did either of you take, have an opportunity to take a look at the job descriptions? We talked about maybe moving forward and looking at a position where the majority of these duties would be in a paid position, yet we still have, with a much smaller stipend, an elected treasurer that fills the statute requirements as several other towns do. So if we're in agreement with that, I'd like to see us then work on a draft job description and move forward in that direction.
I've been reading a little more about this.
Sure.
Um, the duties of the treasurer is outlined in the Connecticut General Statutes. Basically, the town treasurer shall receive all money belonging to the town, pay it out on the order of the proper authority, and keep a record of all monies received and when received, and of all monies paid out, when, for what, and upon whose authority, which record shall always be open to the inspection of any taxpayer in such town, shall be presented to each annual town meeting, being first warned to him and by him, and adjusted to the selectmen. All this is. All this is already being done and done well by our financial office and by, are under the leadership of the Chief Financial Officer of the town. So the treasurer, actually, if you came down to it, maybe we should make it an appointed position and appoint the Chief Financial Officer of the town. Otherwise, I think that it's gonna, it shouldn't have be a stipend, it's not much of a stipend because the treasurer, really, I don't think has that much to do if they don't take it upon themselves. And if we have a treasurer trying to run the town's finances and the CFO trying to run the town's finances, now you have two bosses and that never works well. So we might be, give some thought to that.
So I don't see our business manager being the individual you would put all of the duties of this role on. Is that, is that what you're saying, John? We just make our CFO, who is our business manager for the town and the Board of Education in the case in Wellington, that it's, it would, it's not possible for her to do all of this work. It's just not.
Well, we were talking that it might be necessary to hire somebody else to work in the financial office. But we wouldn't be hiring them to be the, another boss, basically.
No, I, my suggestion, John, would be that they be an assistant to the business manager. That would be my suggestion. In some of the job descriptions we saw from other towns that have similar setups and size to Wellington, call them different things. They have a finance director, we have a business manager. So in the case of the Town of Essex, it was the assistant. Their position title is accountant slash assistant to the finance director. So I would see ours as assistant to the finance manager.
That might be, that would do it for me.
Right, and so that's how I see, so then we hire an individual here and then have that stipend. It would be a relatively small stipend compared to what it is now. And there would be an increase in the paid position. A paid position, we'd be creating a position.
Correct. I, okay, I'm, I think I'm on board with that.
Yeah, I think we're on the same page, it's, you know, it's what we call it, right? So in my mind, it would be an assistant too.
I just don't want a treasurer moving in and having to pay them the same amount that we'd be paying.
No, so I would see the decrease in that elected official capacity and that stipend be much smaller because the duties of that individual would be greatly reduced. This person would then be preparing that, the data to provide to the person acting as the treasurer that then would work with the Board of Finance.
Okay, I think we're, I think we're pretty much in agreement then.
Okay. Alright, so I'm, in our last meeting, Liza, did you have any comments?
Yeah, I was just gonna echo that I agree with John and I think that's sort of what we, we had been getting at last meeting. Yeah, that we were gonna hopefully add on something like a bookkeeper or, you know, something, a position that would support the office functions rather than creating another high level, like CFO type position. So I think that goes along with what we had been discussing.
And I think where we're different than some smaller towns that have it all wrapped up, John, like you said, and it probably was here years ago, where it was the CFO. Signs are falling everywhere. Where our CFO was just the town, right? So there was the Board of Ed had a separate business office and handled some things very different. And now that we're a combined office between the two, the amount of work has just significantly increased within our finance office. And that's, I think that's the only reason why I don't see it possible. Some of these, the majority of these towns where we see are similar in size and makeup to Wellington, their business office is only for the town. It is not both, so they're able to do it in one position as opposed to two.
Okay.
And so that's by providing a service for both entities. We've actually talked ourselves into needing a little bit more. Alright, so I'm gonna draft our next meeting, a job description that we can begin working on to move forward with this, and our next meeting is May 17th. Alright, so send it to your packets and then we'll start doing some work on it at our next meeting. Any other questions, comments? Alright, that is the last of our whole business. That brings us to the next item agenda, which is present to speak. If there's anyone still on the line with us that would like to speak, we ask you to identify yourself for the record and limit yourself to two minutes. Is there anyone present to speak? Going once, going twice. Alright, our office is, doors locked, but we're always open. You can call, email, make an appointment and stop by if you have any questions. Otherwise, we'll be back at you in this manner as a board on the 19th of, sorry, the 17th of May. So move on to good and welfare. My sign didn't last, but I'll remind you that Region 19, referendum is tomorrow. This is just Region 19, unlike most years. There are two separate, it's a separate referendum for our town budget, which the date has not been set yet. So tomorrow between 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM, you can come here to the town office building, bring your mask, bring your ID, and you can vote in the upstairs common room in person. Last, last meeting, I remind you that Connecticut Water was looking for a rap for their water system advisory committee. So if you're interested, reach out to the selectman's office. As always, COVID-19 information and all of the data which I made available to you tonight and then some is available at ct.gov backslash coronavirus. Mobile Food Share will be here at the town office building next Wednesday, May 12th and Wednesday, May 26th, from 11:00 to 11:30. Chances are, we'll keep that drive-through model going for some time. It's working and we'll probably keep it here at the town office building. Food for family boxes will be distributed on May 14th. And the May, typical May drive-through food distribution will be on May 28th. So you can contact Human Services for further details. If you can, please support our local businesses and restaurants. We'll give our referendum. The Human Services Department in conjunction with Public Works Week, which is May 17th through the 21st, will be hosting a fill-up Public Works truck for a food pantry to fill up our food pantry in preparation for summertime. So look for more information to make donations, May 17th through the 21st. I'll remind and ask organizations, families, and individuals to continue to be vigilant, practice basic COVID precautions, wear a mask, wash your hands, stay socially distanced when necessary, and consider vaccination. Alright, now. Why, so we're done, do you have anything for Good and Welfare? Alright. And I will make a motion to enter into an executive decision for a personnel matter and invite Todd Hetlinger and any union representation. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so we will give a moment to wait for everyone to be removed from the meeting. I am gonna move back into my office as this is an executive session so that I can close the door. You'll see me log off here, but Heather will let me back in momentarily.
Alright, we have officially come out of executive session at 7:24 PM. We did have one member of the public rejoin us. We have no other business on our agenda. So seeing no other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Seconded by John, any discussion on this non-debatable matter?
No, thank you.
Thank you, alright, all those in favor of adjourning? Say aye. Aye, motion carries. Thank you all, I'm going to stop our reporting.